A lot of fun things happening. Welcome to the September 12th, 2023 Special City Council Meeting. First, I'll take roll call of a council. You'll see we're a little bit low on numbers today, but we do have a quorum. All council members are present with the exception of Vice Chair Ritchie, Councilmember Lopez, and Councilmember Nadolski. They've been excused this evening, but that doesn't mean that our program is not very special. And we really want to acknowledge, first of all, there's some really special guests in the audience. First of all, we have Brian Scaddy, who's getting recognized this evening from the Planning Commission, but we also have, I have a list here of all the folks that are here, Rick Southwick, Jenny Sandow, Kathy Blaisdell, Dave Graff, and Mandy Shale, and especially welcome to Greg Montgomery, who's hiding back there. I saw you in the hall, and I'm like, wait a minute, where is he? He's hiding. Thank you all so much for coming on this special occasion. We really appreciate your service, of course, and then also appreciate you being here for this evening. So I'm gonna go ahead and hand the mic over to Councilmember Hayer. He's gonna kind of do run of show for our special opening ceremony this evening.
Thank you, Chair. In honor of our Constitution Month, which is September, and Constitution Day, which is September 17th, this Sunday, we have invited the Hill Air Force Base Honor Guard for a flag ceremony. So if you would all stand for the arrival of the colors. Councilmember Blair will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Please bear with me. I get a little misty with the patriotic ceremonies. I'll do my best. Ladies and gentlemen, the United States Constitution is the oldest written national constitution, still in use, and was the first one in existence. It has served Americans well, enhanced freedom and prosperity during the changing conditions of nearly two and a half centuries. Frequently copied, it has become the United States' most important export. After two centuries, every nation in the world except six have adopted written constitutions, and the United States Constitution was a model for all of them. Consequently, if we abandon or weaken its fundamental principles, we betray our own national ideals, and we also weaken our global neighbors. The Constitutional Convention assembled in Philadelphia in 1787 to revise America's first constitution, the Articles of Confederation, but they decided to draft an entirely new frame of government. On September 17th, 1787, 38 delegates signed the new the New United States Constitution. Our Constitution is neither a self-actuating nor a self-correcting document. It requires the constant attention and devotion of all citizens. There is a story often told that upon exiting the Constitutional Convention, Benjamin Franklin was approached by a group of citizens asking what sort of government the delegates had created. His answer was, "A republic, if you can keep it." The brevity of that response should not cause us to undervalue its essential meaning. Democratic republics are not merely founded upon the consent of the people. They are also absolutely dependent upon the active and informed involvement of the people for their continued good health. Few quotes that I wanted to share with you. Patrick Henry said, "The Constitution is not an instrument for the government to restrain the people. It is an instrument for the people to restrain the government, lest it come to dominate our lives and interests." He also said, "If life so dear or peace so sweet has to be purchased at the price of chains and slavery, forbid it, Almighty God. I know not what course others may take, but as for me, give me liberty or give me death." John Adams said, "You will never know how much it has cost my generation to preserve your freedom. I hope you will make good use of it." To all of my colleagues that have sworn it all to obey and protect and defend, excuse me, the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah, may I challenge each of us to read them and understand what they mean, lest our oath be hollow. If you had been a member of the Second Continental Congress in 1776, you were a rebel and considered a traitor by the king. You knew that a reward had been posted for the capture of certain prominent rebel leaders, and the largest British armada ever assembled was just outside New York Harbor. Affixing your name to the document meant that you pledged your life, your fortune, and your sacred honor to the cause of freedom. Interesting fact, if you go to the website www-arthives.gov, you can put your signature on the Declaration of Independence and Constitution. I've done that, and it is a powerful experience. Thank you. Can we bring the colored back up for the flag folding?
For more than 200 years, the American flag has been the symbol of our nation's unity, as well as a source of pride and inspiration for millions of citizens. Born on June 14th, 1777, the Second Continental Congress determined that the flag of the United States be 13 stripes, alternating between seven red and six white, and that the Union be 13 stars, white in a blue field representing a new constellation. Between 1777 and 1960, the shape and design of the flag evolved into the flag presented before you today. The 13 horizontal stripes represent the original 13 colonies, while the stars represent the 50 states of the Union. The colors of a flag are symbolic as well. Red symbolizes hardiness and valor. White signifies purity and innocence, and blue represents vigilance, perseverance, and justice. Traditionally, a symbol of liberty, the American flag has carried the message of freedom and inspired Americans both at home and abroad. In 1814, Francis Scott Key was so moved at seeing the stars and stripes waving after the British shelling of Baltimore's Fort McHenry that he wrote the words to the Star-Spangled Banner. In 1892, the flag inspired Francis Bellamy to write the Pledge of Allegiance, our most famous flag salute and patriotic oath. In July 1969, the American flag was flown in space when Neil Armstrong planted it on the surface of the moon. Today, our flag flies on constellations of Air Force satellites that circle our globe, and on the fin flash of our aircraft in harm's way in every corner of the world. Indeed, it flies in the heart of every airman who serves our great nation. The sun never sets on our U.S. Air Force, nor on the flag we proudly cherish. Since 1776, no generation of Americans has been spared the responsibility of defending freedom. Today's airmen remain committed to preserving the freedom that others won for us for generations to come. By displaying the flag and giving it a distinct fold, we show respect to the flag and express our gratitude to those who have fought and continue to fight for freedom at home and abroad. Since the dawn of the 20th century, airmen have proudly flown the flag in every major conflict on lands and skies around the world. It is their responsibility, our responsibility, to continue to protect and preserve the rights, privileges, and freedoms that we as Americans enjoy today. The United States flag represents who we are. It stands for the freedom we all share and the pride and patriotism we feel for our country. We cherish its legacy as a beacon of hope to one and all. Long may it wave.
I'd like to give a special thanks to the Hill Air Force Base Honor Guard for this special tribute that they've provided for us today. And that's quite a neat thing, Mayor, to be able to receive that.
Now, I'm glad I have the box of tissues. I agree. What a what a great honor, and we'll find a place to display all of these items. And it's a great reminder of the sacrifices that have been made and the commitment we have to liberty and freedom and the things that make this an amazing nation. So that was very emotional for me as well. Thank you very much for organizing this, and we'll find a good place for the city to enjoy this and for everybody to recognize what all this means. So thank you.
Thank you so much for everybody participating in that, and the staff for helping to make that happen. And of course, to the Hill Air Force Base Honor Guard. That's fantastic. And it's kind of apropos, especially thinking about all the ceremonies and remembrances yesterday on September 11th. I know we were kind of talking about that in the work session, that it's important to remember that date. And there's a great activity. I don't know if any of you have gone to the tour where you can see that. Did you go there this year? I didn't go this year.
I didn't go this year. I think it's still got a day or two, though.
Day or two. I'll look up the information until at the end. I'll look it up because that's a wonderful event as well. I also wanted to provide, oh, first of all, I wanted to welcome, I saw a former Planning Commissioner, Angel Castillo, come in the room. Before, Angel, we had welcomed all the other planning commissioners that are here this evening. So welcome to you, and thank you for your service in that role. I also just wanted to acknowledge that we just had a big primary in Ogden City for mayor and a couple of council seats, and I just honor and respect everybody that ran for office. I certainly have been in your place at one time, and know how tough that can be, and it's ongoing for many people as well. But I appreciate and honor everyone that ran for the office, and good luck to those that are left in the race. I think you're up next again, Councilmember Hayer, with our special recognition. Would you like to read that for Brian?
I would. Thank you very much. This is a recognition honoring by the Ogden City Council and Mayor to proudly recognize Brian Scaddy for providing invaluable contributions to the Ogden community. Over the course of several decades, Brian Scaddy has made a lasting impact on Ogden City through his dedicated service. His remarkable 27-year tenure on the Planning Commission stands as a testament to his steadfast commitment to the city's growth and development. Throughout his tenure, Brian was involved with various community projects, including the transformation of Glassman Farm into a hospital, the junction redevelopment, DDO to BDO transformation, general plant development, intermodal hub establishment, municipal building rehabilitation, amphitheater construction, and Weber County Jail relocation, as well as many other things. Brian's commitment to Ogden extends well beyond his service on the Planning Commission. He has served diligently in multiple roles, including a decade on the Board of Adjustment, more than four years on Landmarks Commission, and has participated in various subcommittees. Additionally, Brian has served on the Ogden Pioneer Day Committee since 2001, showcasing his unwavering dedication to celebrate Ogden's rich history and culture. A fan of Weber State Athletics and Events, Brian also volunteered at the D-Event Center as an usher alongside his wife, Rhea. Did I say that right? Oh, good. We are grateful for Brian's remarkable service and contributions to Ogden City. His leadership, knowledge, and attention to detail have played a significant role in Ogden's growth and progress. Brian's legacy in Ogden is a testament to his exceptional work ethic, expertise, and passion for improving the lives of his residents. This is presented, this resolution is presented, this recognition is presented this day, the 12th of September, 2023, and I got a lot more to say about Brian when we can, but let's.
Okay. Come on up, Brian, and bring your family.
Bring your wife.
We'll get a picture. And if you want the other planning commissioners in a picture as well, they're welcome to come up for a picture with you.
I don't think you're done, though. I don't think it's in yet.
You can go down the line and shake our hand, and then we'll do a photo. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you. Thank you for all of your Wednesday nights that you had somebody out of the house.
I'll watch it. You want to bring up the other commissioners?
Yeah, come on up. And Greg, do you want to join too? Come on up, Greg.
Kathy, we'll get you a picture.
This is Rhea's phone.
Don't give him bunny ears.
All right, everybody look in here. One, two, three, three, one, two, three.
Did you want a picture? Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, we got to hear from you a little bit.
If you'd like to say some words. Go do your short words in the mic.
Well, I thank you all. As planning mission members can attest, I'm very shy and don't say much. I appreciate this honor. It really is something that each and many other members of our community have done similar things, and we appreciate them. I appreciate having learned from the current planning commission members and former commission members. I've served with many and learned much from many, and the staff and the former staff and the current staff, planning planners, we've gone through a lot, and we've had some great help and assistance in the planning commission area. So my words would be just thanks to those who have taught me and given me an opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that Councilmember Hayer had some things to say, but I didn't know if any other planning commissioners would like to step to the mic to make, you'd be welcome to make a statement if you'd like to, or Greg, anybody is welcome.
Go ahead.
I was shy, yeah. Here comes Greg. He's gonna do it. Welcome back, Greg. It's so good to see you. You look a little bit less, you know.
Yeah, this is not the normal shirt I used to wear.
Yeah, you look a little bit more relaxed.
And this is actually more formal than I wear nowadays.
Awesome.
But, you know, I had, once I heard about this for Brian, I thought, I've got to be here. I mean, there's no one that I'm aware of who has served more dedicated to the community as a volunteer for so many years, serving because he cares about the community, cares about where he lives, and he wants to make sure things are done right, that things are looked at. And we always had a little joke among the staff that, will your report pass the Brian Scaddy test? Do you really have it accurate and correct? Because if not, he will call you out on it. Brian is very dedicated and wanted to make sure he understood all things that are taking place, which is a very admirable quality, something that I think is, we talk about with other planning commissioners, they look to Brian as, how do you do that? How do you understand that? How can you pick that out? And many times, Brian has done some training for them to understand those things. But I can't think of a better award to honor Brian for his years of service. And Rhea, the background there because of him saying, well, maybe she didn't mind him going out the door each time, but we'll find out. We'll find out later on. But again, I think this is a wonderful honor for Brian, and I'm glad that council chose to do this for him. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg. Come on up.
I would like to just go off of what Greg Montgomery said. He's got a wealth of knowledge that we would love to clone in his head, because he just can see things that we're like, oh, that's a good point, but we didn't see it ourselves. So we are gonna miss him. He is still a citizen of Ogden, though, so he can call anytime he wants during planning commission meetings and tell us what he thinks, and we would appreciate that. So we are gonna miss Brian, but he's been a huge asset to Ogden.
Does he have a special red phone or something?
I'll give him my number.
Come on up.
It was 2002 when I got a call from Mayor Godfrey asking me if I would serve on the Planning Commission, and I said, what's that? But I said yes, because I love Ogden, I love being a citizen here, and I love knowing that we all can make a difference. When I, my first planning commission meeting, I kind of, I didn't know anyone, but I looked at Richard Hayer and listened to him during the meeting, and Brian Scaddy, and I picked out two mentors for me, and they have been wonderful. And I just, I am so thankful for Brian and his knowledge and sharing it with this city for so many years. He is so dedicated, and I hope I can continue to be the same. And thank you, Rich, for your input, too. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all again so much for your service. We really depend on, especially those of us that aren't, well, especially me, I'm not really a planning person, so I appreciate Rich as well as all of your advice when you send things to us on the council. I really appreciate that. Okay, are you gonna say some words?
Sure. I, I remembered back, I got my Wayback Machine. I have a Wayback Machine and a Waywayback Machine, and that was the Waywayback. But when I met Brian, he was the Chair of the Board of Zoning Adjustments, and code enforcement had nailed me on an illegal fence.
What a way to meet.
And that was how I met Brian, and I got, I did not succeed in winning my case. But Brian was the, he was the voice of reason on that, on that board. And, you know, he called me way down. I mean, he was, he was, I didn't know him before, and I didn't keep up with him afterwards until several years later, when he and I were both appointed to the planning commission on the same day. And as you know, I'm mutiny from there, and he didn't. He stayed. And it has been wonderful to have him there that whole time, because as you all know, we read the staff reports when submittals come, and I'm always keenly interested to know what Brian Scaddy had to say about that, because it's been my experience that, like Greg said, he's got a hundred-foot tape he keeps with him, and he goes and he finds the things that either were overlooked, or mistakes made, or whatever, and he calls them out. And I, as a planning commissioner, relied a lot on Brian. I hope we can find someone that will do that in his place, because he saved a lot of things for the city that otherwise would have maybe gone overlooked and been problematic going forward. But it is my pleasure to call him a friend after 20, well, nearly over 30 years since we, since we met. And I see him at Weber State games, because he's always there taking tickets, and the man is relentless at his volunteer work. He's a great example for anybody that lives in Ogden, and I know that he loves Ogden as much as I. And I thank you for your service, Brian.
So I just want to, I just want to thank you. As a junior council member, showing up to the parade and trying to find our spot the first year, you were, you were very nice and kind and got me to the spot. The second year when I showed up, I still didn't know where to go. You were so
You were somewhat kind and got me to the right spot. By the eighth or ninth year when I showed up and asked you the same question, I think you were just like, what the freak is wrong with her? So you didn't, you didn't say that to me, but thank you for being so patient with us and herding the cats that are up here, because I know that just even the seven of us have a hard time getting to the right spot. I can't imagine on that day having all of those people get to the right spot, so thank you. I appreciate all that you've done, not just on the planning commission, but all your other volunteer activities, so thank you.
I'm not positive, Councilmember Hare, but I may, I may have known Brian. It's been close to thirty years. So I've, I've known him a long time. I don't build illegal fences, though, so I never had that pleasure. But I it's been, it's been a, a very great experience for me to, to have these last couple months and, and get to go and meet different residents throughout the city and get to talk about Ogden City. And one of the things that I've talked about in the past is that one of the highlights of this position is getting to meet people that do so much for our city and do it behind the scenes, do it quietly, just because they want to make a difference in the community they live in. And, and as Councilmember Hare said, no one exemplifies that more than, than Brian, and I just want to sincerely thank him because I mean, the, the list of things that he, he has done and participates in and does, I, I would dare say not, not a lot of people know that. And that's, it's honorable and, and awesome, and I appreciate you doing those things, because like Councilmember Hare said, I think a lot of it would go would, would, would get biased, and, and, and you didn't allow that because of your love for this city and this community. So I, I appreciate the work that you did and the time that you sacrificed to do it. I, I, I think we all appreciate the time and effort that it takes to do what you've done, and so it's, it's, it's you're a great example to all of us, not just up here, but everybody in our community, to, to get involved, to make a difference and to, and to try to make this a better place. So I, I applaud everything that you've done, and I, I am actually just, I'm in awe of the way that you were able to do it. So congratulations.
I would, one of the, the things that I've enjoyed about this position in the last number of years, being a big cheerleader for Ogden, and one of the things that's brought me great pleasure and pride has, has been represented is we've been recognized as one of the, well, as the most charitable community in the United States of America when it comes to volunteer hours given and charitable donations. And you're a fantastic example of that. And if everybody in the community was willing to roll up their sleeves and go to work and do the things that you did, we'd live in a utopia. So thank you for being the example. Thank you for all of those years of volunteer service and commitment and dedication and class. You've been an amazing every time I've been to Pioneer Days and everything else, you're just a great representative of everything that we stand for here. So thank you for your time, your commitment, your sacrifice. On that, well, as Rich said, maybe your beautiful wife was happy to get you out the door, maybe not. Either way, the service to the community has been phenomenal, and we thank you both for the sacrifices that you've made and for the contributions you've brought. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, thank you so much. Well, I was thinking too, when, when we were talking, that if anybody wants to apply for the planning commission, if you don't know what that is, first of all, you can look that up, and you can also apply by going to the website, Planning Commission, an Ogden City website, and it looks like there's a button right there that says, apply to be on the commission. So if you're interested in doing that, feel free to submit an application. Awesome. Thank you all.
I think they did fill his spot already, though.
Oh, yeah. We like to have some applications in the backup, right? Okay, great. Well, moving on in our agenda, we have some minutes to approve. First up, we have the, well, I'm gonna wait on yours, right, Councilmember Blair, because you took over some there. So let's go with Councilmember White reading for Councilmember Lopez, the regular meeting of November first, 2022.
I also have another one in front of that one.
Oh, at the top. I'm sorry, I missed that one.
I've read both of those. At the regular meeting of 2020, 2022, and December 6th, 2022, and also I've read the regular meeting of November 1st, 2022.
That's a lot of twos, but thank you so much for noticing that. I'm sorry. Regular meeting of December 6th, 2022, Councilmember Hare.
Yes, Chair, I have reviewed those and found them to be accurate to the best of my recollection.
Awesome. And finally, we have the special meeting of October 11th, 2022, the work session of September 20th, 2022, joint work session of November 1st, 2022, and the special meeting of December 6th, 2022. That is all Councilmember Blair.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate, and I would make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Blair, a second by Councilmember Hare. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thanks for reading all those minutes. Okay, up next, we do have a report from the planning commission, the proposed Union Station Campus Master Plan Development Framework. Just want to make sure to let those that are here in attendance for that item, that we are going to do the presentation this evening, receive public input, but we do plan on tabling this item to a date certain, which we believe will be the 26th, due to the fact that we didn't have an ordinance or resolution at the time to read before we are taking this, but we did notice it, so we want to make sure to go ahead and go through the presentation and then take your input and make sure that we get all that taken care of this evening. So we'll welcome Brian, Brandon, sorry. Too many Bryans on the schedule today, sorry.
A lot of Brandon's that work for Ogden too, as well, so, all right.
We like Bandons.
I guess so. Thank you, Madam Chair and Council. So as was spoken before, so I'll go through the presentation to let everyone know what the development framework includes. So the, the proposal is to adopt the Ogden Union Station, or Campus Master Plan Development Framework. And so I'll, I'll go into more detail about what this includes, but really what it is, is an overall master plan for the development of the Union Station Campus. The area that is included in this master plan is the property that's just west of Wall Avenue, between Wall Avenue and the Front Runner Rail, and it goes from 22nd Street down to 27th Street. So that area is included in the Union Station Development Frame, Framework Plan that's highlighted. In the development framework, it's divided into three different areas. So you have the North Parcel, which is owned by UTA, then you have the Union Station parcel that's 8.4 acres, and the South Parcel, that's 4.2. So total equals 29.6 acres. The Development Framework Plan is referenced in the Make Ogden Downtown Master Plan. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of those areas. So the, the Make Ogden Master Plan is divided, as you know, into three, or sorry, to four episodes. And believe it or not, we are almost at the end of episode one. So episode one talks about the development of the Utah Transit, or the UTA property, so the area that's north of 24th Street, and talks about the importance of this property being developed as part of the, the Union Station Campus. Episode two also talks about the buildout of the Union Station Campus and the importance of providing spaces for commercial, for hospitality uses, retail uses, and as well as educational uses. Episode two also includes, or identifies some projects that should be part of the Union Station Campus. So it talks about the, a new Union Station Museum building and a train hall. Talks about the renovation of the Court, or Four Court Plaza in front of the Union Station, as well as the Transit Plaza north of the, the Union Station and other cultural buildings and a parking structure that would be part of this campus to provide additional parking for people that use the campus as well as the downtown area. The Campus Master Plan was built on four pillars, and they include economic sustainability, transportation, history and culture, and education. One of the primary reasons for adopting the, the Framework Development, or the Development Framework is protecting the Union Station Building. As, as you all know, it's an anchor to historic 25th Street and an icon to Ogden. And so one of the primary reasons for adopting the Framework Development Plan is protecting its view, protecting its longevity. So in the Framework Plan, it talks about the allowable building heights surrounding the Union Station. And in the graphic on the bottom, it shows where the heights are limited based on the, the Union Station Building. The first tier, that light pink area, limits buildings to the height of the, the wings of the Union Station. And then the outer areas that are the dark pink are limited to the height of the Great Hall. So it really protects the view of the Union Station and makes sure that that's a focal point for the area. Another part of the Framework Plan is the, the network of pedestrian pathways or paseos and shared streets. This is one, one of the parts that I think really, I guess, ties everything together, is the property develops. Of course, it won't all develop at once, but it'll develop over time, and so as that occurs, this plan will help make sure that the, the campus is developed as one single campus that's easy to use for pedestrians, for people that use bicycles or vehicle. So there are lots of ways to traverse the campus. So there are some examples. Well, and also the other thing I want to highlight is with this network of streets and trails and pass, or paseos, it also provides an opportunity to develop land across from the Front Runner Rail, so it provides that future opportunity.
Can I interrupt just really quickly on this slide? So those building heights that you're kind of displaying right next to Union Station currently, if we develop on that other side where future development is written, and would those building heights also follow a similar pattern?
That's a great question. To my knowledge, they're not addressed in the Framework, Development Framework Plan. But that's something to take into consideration.
Because it's not part of the campus right now. It's just behind it.
That's definitely a, a good idea. So this is an example of the shared street. So if you look to the top right, you can kind of see the, where it is located on the campus. So this shared street would allow for people that are using bikes or walking or even have a vehicle to share the street. The shared, and I'll go into more detail, but the shared street is really an area where it's an active space for the entire campus and connects the North Parcel to the Union Station Parcel. So I think it's a great opportunity. This one also shows the paseos. And again, on the top right, it shows the different areas where the paseos would be be built. And that's one of the advantages of having this Framework Development Plan is that the entire campus will function as one development, although it'll happen over, over time. So I think it's a great opportunity. And the paseos also connect the open spaces throughout the development, so if someone is at the BRT hub, they could potentially hop on one of those paseos and make their way to the Union Station Plaza or down to 25th Street. And this is an example of what the open space could include and the experience that you could have in those spaces. This is another part that I think is really important. This is, talks about active ground floor. And so the orange areas are developable areas or areas that could include structures. And the magenta or pink color shows the areas or frontages of the buildings that should be considered for active ground floor uses. And so those are uses that would promote or encourage people to walk. They would be able to spend time there and receive the services that they're, they're looking for throughout that development. So it really gives vitality to the, to the area.
Can we just go back to that slide really fast? I just have a quick question. On the, the upper right diagram, and the fronts of this, all the buildings on Wall Avenue, I guess they're on the north side, they don't have the pink?
I'll go back to this.
Oh, yeah, perfect. That's better. Yeah, thank you. That's a planner for you. You got it. Anyway, but why aren't those all pink facing Wall Avenue?
Yes, okay, good question. So let me so this area right here is considered, is called the shared, or is a shared street. So this would actually be considered the primary street in, on this portion of the project. Because of the activities, the activity area would be higher in this area as opposed to this portion of Wall Avenue. And it also is based on the open space. So you have an open space in this location here. And then you also have an open space area here. So these, these are high pedestrian areas. But that's why it changes as you go past 24th Street. These are, you probably have less pedestrian activity in these areas, but along the shared street, this would be your, your high activity area. So that, that's the reasoning behind that.
Would you be precluded from having?
No, absolutely not. These areas would just be encouraged before the frontages along Wall Avenue.
I'm just curious, because right across the street, there's some retail establishment, so I just want to make sure. Kind of keeping that in mind.
Yeah, definitely. Good question. And this, this image just shows the context within the downtown area, so the campus or the Union Station Campus is outlined in this black color right here, and it shows if this area past the, or west of the Union Station were to develop, this almost becomes ground zero. But really, this, this is a catalyst project that will encourage other areas to redevelop and to, yeah, this will be something that will carry the vision forward, so see if I missed anything real quick.
Any other questions from Councilmembers while I was looking?
I, I do have a kind of a question. When you talk about these episodes, they're very much likely to go several decades into the future, right? It's not gonna happen within ten years or?
Yeah, let me go back to the episodes. So the Make Ogden Plan is made up of these four episodes, and then it has projected, or I guess, goals that the city is working towards. So, but, sorry, what, but yes, it may not follow that exactly, but these, these are the projected goals of what to accomplish.
So how does this fit the you know, my my experience, which is getting kind of long in the tooth with city, you know, planning and plans in general. You know, our master plan, you know, once they get about 20 years old, they get a little stale and you know, need a little jumpstart or maybe a whole new re redress. And this this is going to be, you know, into that 20 year timeframe.
Oh, right.
I mean, how are you going to keep this thing fresh? Is that? Maybe that's the right question.
Yeah, I mean, at least with general plans, the ideal update is every 10 years. And so this is not restricting the Make Ogden Plan from being updated. And typically, the timeline for a general plan is 30 years. So that's normal to have this type of timeline. But usually they are updated more often than that. So it gives you a projection and a goal to work towards, but typically they're updated more often than every 20 or 30 years.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Any other questions that I only had one other slide and then
You bet.
I'll be all done. So I guess just four things that I want you to consider with this plan. So it does implement the Make Ogden Downtown Master Plan. So it's important part of that. The the development framework plan also is mentioned in the the downtown implementation ordinance. So the recent ordinance that was adopted states, and actually I'll go back because I had that specifically here. So it states in the downtown implementation ordinance that because this area is zoned CMU, there are some specific regulations for the campus. It says where a project is located within an area of the city adopted city adopted project master plan, including this Union Station Master Plan and Wonder Block Master Plan, building height shall be governed by that plan. So that's one of the main reasons why we would like to adopt the framework development plan, because it's referenced in the downtown implementation plan. The other reasons are to protect the existing buildings, to promote reinvestment in the existing buildings and to improve the overall site. And then lastly, to encourage the revitalization of the downtown. We feel like this is the Union Station campus is an area that that should be a priority and a focus, and we want to be the best it can be. So that's all I have.
Do you have one more question? I've just heard some concerns from folks that the Union Station might be just given to developers to develop without any, you know, really citizen input. Do you know if that's part of this plan at all?
I've read the plan and nowhere does it say that it would be given for private use.
That's my understanding too. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
Right. Yeah, from what I've been told, it's going to be improved and and used for public purpose. But
Any other questions? Okay, great. Well, unless we want to have more discussion, we can go ahead and take public input.
Thank you.
And we'll be happy to take public input on this item and this item alone. Right now, you can step to the mic and state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. And if you're online and on the Zoom meeting, you can also raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Do you have any phone numbers? I can't tell. Go ahead and step up. We'll just figure out the online thing here in a second. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Steve Jones, a Ogden citizen. And I would like to compliment all the hard work that's been done on this framework plan. But I'm going to suggest that it needs a lot more work before being adopted. You know, there there's multiple activities going on with the Advisory Committee and a two year contract that it's for doing planning. And I mean, one of the things I just saw in this presentation is there's a building that is sitting between Union Station and Wall Avenue. That should be a no-no and should should be prohibited in in the plan. Another thing that I saw was that the new museum building is positioned behind the Rail Center. Well, what is there today is all the rails and switches and so forth that are needed to get railroad equipment into and out of the Rail Center. So if you put a building there, it's going to be landlocked. So I mean, those those are a couple of the obvious things that I'm I'm really thinking it's a good starting point, but this needs a lot more work before it before it gets implemented. So I'm encouraging you to what what I would suggest is delay the delay the vote on this until the new administration takes office. Let them let let them make it their own at that point. There's, you know, there's not that much time between now and when the new administration would take office. And let's make it a great plan. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Travis Pete. I had a couple of concerns that basically it talked about economic sustainability. And then the dynamic in here does not say that there it prohibits any land sales. And so I think that it needs to just be like VDO. That's been a revenue stream for us and because we haven't sold the property. The junction is the same way, revenue stream, because we haven't sold the property out from under us. And then we also have, as a landlord, a lot more latitude and basically just and and say so on the properties when we have when we have ownership. As soon as we surrender ownership, we surrender our our rights to it. It's now quote an allowable use. I've got your attention to Slackwater. As great a development and investment as that is, I simply said a revolving loan fund that we should have gone to them, engineered the building to have a second and third floor capability. And then should they build it, they pay us back for whatever that cost differential was. But nope, Slackwater pizza and allowed use. And yet we're trying to get the whole Make Ogden Plan and do higher densities. And yet we build a one level suburban shopping restaurant center right in the heart of the downtown. So we've just lost that. We lose that ability because it's now an allowable use. And so unless in the ordinance, it says no sale of any of the property, they're going to push it. And unless it says frontages on Wall Avenue, they're going to push it. We had a thing called the Ogden City Mall, had no frontages. And yet now you look at Leighton Hills Mall and New Gate Mall and some of the others, and they have frontages built to the outside because that whole inward facing thing was already lost in the 80s. And in the 70s, when we said, oh, fluorescent lighting, de elementary, which you guys approved and tore down inward facing. And so I think that's my one of my biggest concerns is that dynamic. Unless it's written in, sky's the limit for them pushing back and and not doing what you want. As far as the Western exposure also, Salt Lake has it for a good portion of their downtown. I think we need it for a portion of our downtown too. So that needs to be written into the ordinance at those heights limits. And as Mr. Jones said, that building should not be in front of the the Browning Center and in front of the Browning Theater. There should, there should be a degree. And then I think also we need to consult with Salt Lake City, the State Historic Preservation Office, the Preservation Utah. We need to say, hey, what is the best way to protect this? And particularly talking with Salt Lake City to say, what are the pros and cons and how effective is Gateway? Because they've taken all their property around a particular historic station and encompassed it and redeveloped it. But what mistakes are made? How do we fix that so we don't perpetuate those same errors? And then the same thing, if this is so to speak, the center point of our downtown, so to speak, our temple of worship, we have worldwide attention and and mayor and good compliment for the sesquicentennial. Tremendous amount of work and yet no clearinghouse that says, give, send us all that information. How would you help us as a world? Thank you. And I did send you guys in it. So
Yeah, I saw that coming. I haven't had a chance to read it. Sorry, I'm doing double duty here. So I'm there we go. I gotta be sick. Come on up.
I'm Teresa Hall, who's Ogden resident. And what I'm thinking of is we do have the centennial coming up. And what are we going to do with the campus being a big mess? And if they start smothering Union Station with a bunch of apartments and crap, I mean, I don't get it. I don't see why anybody would go for it. This is a special place. You know, and I don't think the developers understand it. I mean, criminy, I spent 21 years there. Of course, you guys have heard that before. But I mean, where the get the trains in and out on that by the Eccles Wells Center, that needs to be taken into a huge consideration. We have trains here that are, I mean, really, really valuable. We have the, I mean, I could go through them. I've given tours on enough of them. But we have to be able to get trains in and out. And also when the front, when the when the big boy comes through town, we need to have that water pipe there to pump in for the, you know, different different celebrations. And I don't even know if they still even have that working. I I just, I'm just, I'm pretty upset. I mean, but you know, the mixed use thing and everything, I mean, who's going to stop them from doing anything? It's like you've turned over everything to Brandon and he isn't listening. I mean, I've been at every one of these meetings practically and nobody listens to us. And by the way, you talk about volunteer hours. I have over 7,000. Lee Whitten has about 7,700. And a few of them might have 500, I mean, 5,000, but nobody's ever said, don't since get any prime time or anything. So I'm kind of angry. And then you guys let Jamin Burnoff threaten to erase my hours and, you know, push me out. I mean, if this is the kind of people you guys have hired, well, then you guys need to can him and get somebody else. That's my opinion.
Thanks, Teresa. Is there anybody online, Brandon? I can't tell. I can tell there's five attendees. Welcome.
Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I'm going to reference something which might sound like it's not on this topic, but I promise you it does tie to it. Y'all, as a body, have commissioned the only truly equitable community survey that there has ever been with actual cross tabs. And that was what you put forth and had Weber State work on with the community survey for the CREP, which started off as HB411. It is truly equitable as it is census tract driven. You unequivocally, without a doubt, had feedback from the entire city. And one of the problems that I have going to these meetings is that when we have design gatherings or charrettes for the public, that we see the same people, the exact same people. And I have challenges with some of the data that we have and the fact that it didn't hold to the standard that y'all had put forth for CREP, making sure that it was equitable and that it wasn't just the same group of people influencing the direction. Because you all govern for all of Ogden, unless you're on a specific. This is my district, and then you should be advocating for those people's needs. And Chair Chaburka, the district that you oversee, tends to be the most unheard section in our entire city because they have different obligations to be to be met prior to going to things in the middle of the day or at the end of the day for working jobs. So I too echo that this is something that should be held for the next administration. And I and I agree with some of the other folks that are saying that we need guardrails on these things, just because we said they're they're, we said that they're all, they're not going to sell it. You you have no idea what people are going to do in the future. You have no idea what the market holds. And a lot has changed since 2020. I'd like to lift up the fact that when the YMCA was going to be building the Marshall White Center, and I met with their president, they were like, well, we're not going to do anything until we do another survey because that data is three years old. Your data is at least three years old. And a lot has happened with commercial usage and the way people use space since 2020. I 100% support the Make Ogden Plan. I I have, when I was flown out to the National Gathering for Strong Towns, I actually spoke with Joe Minicozzi, and I have his cell phone number. And he encourages you all to look at what you're doing with regards to denying infrastructure to accelerate density, although while density is a good thing, it should never hap happen at the expense of infrastructure.
Thank you. Any other comments here? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Linda Sanchez. One of the things that I I would also like it table till the next administration. One of the concerns that I do have is is the height around the Union Station. And then when I was reviewing this, it has the Union Station Master Plan, the Wonder Buck Master Plan, which you guys all admit that it's like, which master plan are we talking? This master plan, this master plan? So when you look at the diagrams on the slides or on the on the stuff that you send out, I would encourage that you overlap like with different colors. Like, the Union Master Plan is yellow so that you can distinguish what is what plan because it gets very it's not very transparent. And it gets kind of hard to follow sometimes because I'm like, okay, well, I thought we were talking about a different master plan. But if it was all on one slide with different colors, that may help a little bit to understand what is what. The other thing that I encourage you to do when you guys do do it is when you have a slide, it's it's like inform consent, right? I feel like you should say, you want to adopt this because why? And bullet points. And why would you not? Like, what is the benefit to the city? What is the benefit to the citizens? And if there's any financial differences? Just so that it's like not wordy, just bullet points and so that it's just yes and no. So that it would help people to kind of be able to visualize because a lot of people are visualized. I mean, some people read better and that they can totally like create create this whole reality. And then there's other people that is like, okay, I want to envision this, but it's it's not clear. I just think it would help those people to have a little more clarity. And that is my recommendation.
Awesome. Thanks. I'm a visual person too. I like it. Any else here? Okay, we have Heath Sato online.
Hello, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I just wanted to lift up the comments about the public meetings and presentations. If they could be done in such a way that we get better representation there. And we weren't able to make the last one because they scheduled the same day as long scheduled, they all debate. And my friends at Cisco said there are like five people there and the same people they see each time. So I would really like to see better outreach and go to the communities rather than just I I don't know what the better way is. It's not my my purview, but I would like to see more involvement in that regard. And I'd also like to lift up the comment about investing our money without more current data.
Can you hear me?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're just a little muffled. You can have more time, but I just I'm having a hard time hearing.
That's fine. I just want to lift up that we shouldn't be investing our money without more current data, that those comments to that effect. And researching our water use better. And researching our water use better, our, our infrastructure so legally. And we've been told that a lot of this development will happen with, with a ton of tiff and we're going to get deeper and deeper into issues with our infrastructure failing if we don't have the developments that are going in supporting those. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, great. And then, oh, so we have several questions here. There's a couple, I think, if you're willing to answer them. Brandon, I don't remember on the drawing the building in front of the Union Station. I guess the first thing to say is these are just conceptual ideas. Nothing's been solidified. And everything that would happen on the campus, as far as I'm understanding, would come back to the council, Planning Commission, council. It would come back through the regular processes, so.
Yeah, there's a reason it's called framework. So it is, I mean, the goal is to assure that the, the campus is, has an overall master plan. But each specific area would have, more than likely have a master plan with a development agreement that is signed by the developer so that what they're proposing would, would be built. So this is really an overall.
And through the Planning Commission and through the City Council for each one of those items.
So the area that they were talking about.
Okay, now I see it, yeah.
Yeah, so it is in front of that. I don't know if they call it, if it's called the Annex Station.
An annex, is that what you said?
Yeah, so that's the area that's being discussed. So the, the main portion of the building with the, or the Great Hall and the wings, those would be, the view of those would be, there would be nothing in front of those. And it says that, let's see, I think it was here. So it says no vertical development in front of the, the Great Hall as well as the wings. And then the, the buildings, the building, I guess, that is in front of that, the Browning or the Annex, is limited to the same height as the, the height of the wings.
Okay. And then I'm just looking to see if there's anything else we can kind of answer. Is there anything any council members would like to respond to?
No, I, I just, I just want to mention that in 2022, HB462 was a legislative bill that went through requiring cities and towns that have frontrunner stations and BRT stations to create a plan around their frontrunner stations, which includes a moderate income housing plan. And so I think that these kind of frameworks can't wait for the next administration. These kind of frameworks should be happening now so that we don't end up having a developer come in and build things that we don't want. And so I think we've got kind of this push-pull that I don't think people quite understand around this area that we have to be looking at and making sure that we protect the area. And so I think that's what you're trying to, to do with this, this framework. So it was, it was introduced in, am I right, Mayor, 2022? HB462. And it has a lot of things in there. It's a really long bill. But the legislature is pushing back on those of us who have frontrunner stations. And they want high density around those stations built ASAP. And I think that we are, can't put our head in the sand any longer, so.
Right. And then I think too, I mean, I understand I made the list of these concerns. I'm one of the representatives on the Advisory Committee and I can't remember how many people on that committee, but there's quite a few from very different groups. And so I think that this is an ongoing process. Just because we adopt a framework doesn't necessarily mean that everything's finalized. I mean, in fact, nothing's finalized because the whole planning with the developer group and all of that is still underway, is my understanding of the timeline. But I do, I mean, I do definitely agree that I want to do more other kinds of community engagement, which I know is not necessarily all your department. But I think that Advisory Committee is going to be a big part of that as well.
Yeah, so this is not the final step.
Yeah, sharing information back and forth with constituent groups. You know, so I'm certainly open to still talking with people and meeting with people about that and providing the feedback through that advisory group as well. And I know others are too. I saw Charles Trenneman putting a, you know, big shout out on social media to say, hey, come and give me your suggestions about this framework or about these different things that are happening with Union Station. And certainly I think we should be visiting with people where they are versus always asking them to come to us. So I agree with that too. But I'm, I don't think, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I don't feel like adopting a framework like this, whether there's some tweaks or some things we want to change about it, finalizes things to a point that we still wouldn't be in an iteration of what's coming forth, if that makes sense. So that's my understanding.
That's correct, yeah. I know Community and Economic Development, they have plans to, you know, work with whoever's developing the property to come up with a specific master plan for each project. So this would, this has, this document's guiding, but it also does have some regulation to it. But there's a reason that it's not, doesn't say exactly where a specific building has to be built because we're aware that whoever develops the property will still have to go through that exercise and, and really dial in and know all the details, so.
Yeah, like for example, with the rail center, et cetera, all of that. I mean, all of that will be taken into consideration when that part of the development kind of comes to fruition.
Right.
Depending on what those stakeholders say at that time. And I do know that the developing group for the campus has said they would love to come and meet with groups and, and get feedback on different elements too. So, and we'll leave that open to people as well. And meanwhile, I think we're tabling this anyway. So unless there's any other questions or discussion we'd like to have.
Chair, I think, I'll take that as a cue.
Please.
I would make a, a motion then that we.
Excuse me, no, thank you.
Concerning proposed ordinance 2023-50, that we continue this item to September 26th.
Does it continue the same thing as table?
No, but continues the right thing, I think.
Why does it continue?
I don't know what that means. We either have extending or tabling.
Table needs to date certain, so.
I guess we could call it a table, huh?
Yeah, this is called a table.
I don't know what a continue is. Okay, sorry, thank you. Tabling, okay.
Second.
Oh, so sorry, I didn't know if it was a second. So I have a motion by Councilmember Hare, a second by Councilmember White to table this item to September 26th. And this is a voice vote for that? Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. So we'll table it until then. And then also the other council members will be present as well, so. Good, great, now we're up to public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding any concerns or ideas on any topic. And you can step to the podium and state your name for the record. And you have three minutes to speak. Or if you're online, on a Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand. Welcome.
Hi.
Sorry about that.
Adrian Seblar with Ogden. What just happened, I think, is a travesty. Because you had a discussion, you, you wanted people to stand up and say something. And then you had another discussion and you wouldn't let people respond to that. That seems to me to be unfair. I don't know, maybe it's just the way that Ogden City does their business. But it just seems to me that there's not enough people saying what they want because y'all are supposed to represent the citizens of Ogden, not just yourselves. And that's what it seems like to me that's happening. This whole thing is sort of rushing through. We've only got a couple more months that we can probably have a, a whole different view of what's going on. And I guess I look at it too, that, you know, you're saying that the UTA wants us to do certain things. What is their drop dead date? Is it September? Is it October? Is it November? We've got time. Quit pushing people to make decisions. And you're saying, oh, nothing will, you know, it'll, it'll be different when we get ready to do something past the framework. Well, the thing that happens is that people say, oh, well, the city council said we should do this. And they're dependent on you to make this, the decision. And then you have other citizens that are out here that want to put their two cents worth in. So it, it just looks like to me that we're pushing it too fa, too fast. We should be tabling this until we can get something else. I like the idea that this young lady had over here. But I also think maybe we need to have a scale model of what's going on so people can really see visually, you're looking at a flat piece of paper. And we're listening to people say that we need to do this, this, and this. And this is what really, this is what that picture really looks like. We don't know because some people can't visualize it. And I know the people that have designed this, they understand it from ground on. But the rest of us aren't, don't have that privilege. And I just think that we're pushing it too far and we're pushing it too fast. So anyhow, I just wanted to say that as well as apologize. I don't know again what this, this, the process is and not being able to speak up after you've had this discussion that you just had. But anyhow, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Laura Lewis, I live in Ogden. This is a question for.
For you.
She's helping me out here.
She knows, darn me.
This is the second time, I think, you've brought up HB462 and saying it's requiring us to have low-income housing next to a transit. And I've looked at that bill and I don't see where it's that specific in that bill. Could you come next week or with the next time you meet and show me in that bill where it says that we have to build low-income housing next to a transit? I don't see anything in there that specifies a distance or anything. I saw something about a database and I'm not schooled in reading these bills. And that's why I want your help to make sure that we, we're both interpreting that the same way. So I appreciate that, thank you.
You bet.
Any comments?
Linda Sanchez, I did want to reach out to you guys. I have been trying to get people to come to the meetings to express themselves. And many people feel like here in Ogden, they're not being heard. It's not worth their time because you don't listen. I just want to remind you, we don't serve you, you serve us. So it is important for you guys to get input. Now, it concerns me because earlier in the work session, Mr. Blair, or Councilmember Blair, I heard you say, if we take in input, public input, then we now, when, if we table it, then we should not have to listen to the people again. Now, that's not word for word what you said.
No, it's not.
But you said, it was discussed that if we spoke tonight, then we would not get a chance to respeak. Now, there may be things that have changed. I just want to remind you guys, you guys make money to represent us. It is important for you to listen. And it is important for, I mean, for you not just to take things and, if, speak for yourselves, okay? The other thing is, it kind of concerns me, Councilman, Councilmember White. Multiple times, I keep hearing, well, that is what the state wants us to do. I understand you work for the state during the day.
I don't.
Oh, well, that's what it says on the internet. You work for the city, for your constituents to stand up with the city. So if the state says something that your constituents don't want, it is your obligation, you swore on oath, to help the citizens of Ogden, not the state of Ogden. So please help us, okay? Listen to us. And if there are things that we need to understand a little better, help me understand. Thank you for your time. By the way, also, I listened to that wonderful presentation and unfortunately I wasn't here. It was amazing. Let me tell you, I work with veterans and there are so many people that give their lives for us. We take, take it for granted. And for us to take something like that, even though it's just a few minutes, and honor them, I really appreciate that. And that's what speaks to my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here? Okay. Welcome back.
Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I, I think you may have been confusing the work that Councilmember White does with Wasatch Regional Front with a state agency. It is not a state agency. And Laura, I just sent you what you're looking for. It was an amendment. What's happening here is the reason why y'all should be investing money and time into holding town halls. And I know that that is a really difficult noticing thing because when two or more of you are gathered together, it's an official meeting and so on and so forth. But this format is not conducive to the dialogue and the connection that y'all say that you want to have and it seems like you want to have. And so it's going to require some intentionality of meeting people where they are and allowing them to have dialogue. Because a lot of this back and forth of confusion is a direct response to this is not a conducive format for that. Going back to what we're talking about for the Union Station, I, I appreciate you putting some more time in between that. And I totally understand that a framework is not the full-on, we're going to do this and that there still is a process for people, each project to come forth. But I, I would again like to lift up that my grandma used to say, good fences make good neighbors. And when I was doing a whole lot of cycling, you know, and you used to think that a kryptonite lock will keep your bike safe, it will not. It keeps honest people honest. And whenever there is an opportunity to take advantage of a system, sooner or later, somebody will. And, and I think it's imperative that we make sure that we have some guardrails on marking in a legal manner what your intention is. That your intention of Union Station, no, no developer's going to sell it and give it away. It's ours, it belongs to us. Or we're going to put some parameters on what we will and will not allow and over what time period. I think that's really important. And that's where a lot of the panic is coming from. Because the way that it code exists right now, if anybody really wanted to, they could. It's the exact reason why y'all didn't get a vote on the Wildlife Center. You know, and I'm grateful for the outcome where we are right now. But all of that tension and all of that conflict is because there's a gap in allowing you your right to be checks and balances to the administration. And it just needs a clear standing. And I'd like to really have you all consider the phrase, there is a difference between planning for growth and paying for growth. And we have a tendency, as the RDA, to be doing a whole lot of paying at the expense of our infrastructure and our community. Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Travis Pete. One of the dynamics that I saw was just the approach that I had with our friends from Marriott Sladeville coming in fairly regularly and asking for mud to be taken care of so the mosquitoes are taken care of. And, and then just kind of this little process that sometimes it kept having to happen. And I look at the process too. And administration has sat at this end of the desk during the last seven years as I asked for a streetlight repair. And then one council member spoke up and said, can we check the streetlight repair? And then it was done. You were all at the same meetings too. So I'm trying to figure how are things said, written down, and then not heard or acted upon? I've heard at different times where you guys have challenged administration on things and they said, oh, well, we certainly could provide that information. on things. And they said, oh, well, we certainly could provide that information. And then there's not a follow-up on some of the times those requests for information. And, and when I challenged the, the development at VDO, and they, and one of the individuals responsible said, oh, it's a big document. And all of you went, oh, yeah, okay, off the hook. I, I just think that some of those things, when I said, a lot of that infrastructure was the first multiple years of that development, were to go back into the, into that space so that when it could develop, it was all there and ready. And I champion, and I celebrate what the administration has done in conjunction with our, our partner there. It's just, it's been phenomenal. But there have been, where the envelope has been pushed and shadowing of someone's driveway during the winter months, so they can't even collect their mail without ICE still being there. And yet, those are our neighbors. Marriott Sladeville, we're hoping that these farmlands that bring us our farmers' market produce stay in business. And yet, we wall them off and ignore them as, as not being good neighbors. And, and so I, and I also celebrate the, the noticing to the papers. I think that that's very critical, that we notice the, notice to the papers, even though we think, oh, it's an archaic form of communication. And two members were up here, were ready to just vote it out. Yet, fortunately, calmer heads prevailed. And those individuals also then said, oh, yeah, let's keep this uniform. Let's notice the papers. Some of these things that you're left out of loophole, like I said, write it in the ordinance that no property shall be sold. Write it in the ordinance that there shall be front of John Washington, Ironwall Avenue, or we're not going to get it. So in the framework, it can be written. It's not there because we still have plenty of notice time to put that, those changes in there, or it's not going to happen. Twenty-eight cookie cutter homes are put on at 550 24th Street. Town homes, oh, we've got to gift them this property. And then we have to pay them 6% to put our road in for us. We've got our budgets all across the board. Cut 5%, cut 10%. Here's what it is. But we're going to gift a developer 5% to build a road that we could easily put out to bid and save 5%. So I think we're doing a lot of things backwards. And, and I think, like I said, it goes from the planning to the mayor, not you. Twenty-eight town homes that don't fit the East Central General Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, online, we'll go with Heath Sato.
Hey there. Heath Sato, Ogden resident. Two things from an ongoing battle and, and today in the work session. The ongoing battle has been the Wildlife Center. And I am so pleased the city has moved to grant them their extension. And, and the terms are fair. And I'm very happy to see it. I also know we lost a lot of just effort and sweat and pain and animals that couldn't be treated in the meantime, because this was just handled so poorly. But we're there now. And I don't know if it's because certain people recently left or what, but it's awesome. And I'm so happy to see that. And thank you to everyone that has moved the things that need to move to make that happen. I appreciate that. It was also great to see a really, what appears to me, a really good developer in the work session today showed up in person to speak to you. They spent, I don't know how long, pulling together all those properties themselves. And at the end, they're asking for a little bit of the city and DOT land to actually make everything better, like to improve the land that they are getting and, and doing it on their own dime and, and doing the hard work to get the HUD money. I really appreciate developers like that. And we can get developers like that if the city works with developers in a better way instead of using a very slim group of insiders that, that get handed tons of stuff for free. So I, I'm really appreciating seeing that happen. And I think we need to really have a goal of working more in that direction than what was mentioned before, paying for growth instead of planning for growth. Thanks.
Thanks. Any other comments? One.
Teresa Holmes, Ogden resident.
Wait till you're at the mic, because the people online.
Well, you know, the thing is, we've got our 100th anniversary coming up next year. So what are we going to do? Tear up everything? And on Spike Day, the thing is, we had about 200,000 people in town for the trains. They wasn't there for retail or anything else like that, but it really did help the restaurants downtown. So I mean, there is a lot of train enthusiasts. So what are we going to do? Tear up everything and put in retail and smother the campus with apartments that are too close by and maybe too tall? You guys don't get that we have a gold mine there. We should be figuring a way to get people from Promontory to Ogden on a train or a bus or something. I mean, we would make so much money. People want this. And yet, you're doing it this way. I totally think that we could do better. And that's my opinion. And I know nobody listens to me because I'm a mere docent. But you know what? I'm really good at what I do. So I do want us to have a spectacular party for Union Station's 100th anniversary. And that's it right there. We need this. Ogden needs it. We need to know that we're a good community and we have a lot going for us. And, you know, just destroying what we have for something in the future, for a few retail stores. You know what I'd like to do? I'd like to send them up to Washington Boulevard to develop that and put some more parking lots up there, you know, and get some town, get some homes up there. But I mean, I remember the old downtown before they put them all in. And once they put them all in and that's gone, now what? And I went to the gym over there the other day, and the elevators, the carpets, everything in there is looking pretty tacky. It's getting run down. I don't know who their landlords are. Maybe it's you guys, maybe it isn't. But if that's the way the new development ends up, you know, with nobody keeping track of what's going on in there, we're going to have another mess. And besides, I like the museums and I really not thrilled with his plan, other than if they would put it further away from the station, you know, and keep a live rail back in behind the station just for our trains and our celebrations and for the big boy when it comes to town. And that waterspout over there, I hear, may not even be working. That's how we get these steamers to come to town, you know. So there's a lot more to consider than, oh, we need retail space, you know. Frankly, I guess we do, but not at the train station. Up 25th Street needs help, too. Money there.
Thanks, Teresa.
And I love you guys.
Thank you. All right. Good. Well, thank you so much. Okay. Any discussion or any response?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. And I'll, I'll work with you. But it's under the Moderate Income Housing Plan document. And I can, I can. Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's, so, it's not talking about low-income housing. It's actually increasing the housing around station areas and increasing the density. And so by, by putting a framework to the height, helps us make sure that we, we won't have high-rise apartments around the stationary.
Yeah, maybe you all.
We can talk.
Conversation.
I also want to follow up by saying, so you were asking me about advocating for cities. I have been a board member on the Utah League of Cities and Towns. I have done nothing but advocate for our city against state laws like this. And it's really hard, including stationary planning policy, including short-term rentals. And so to think that I'm not at the Capitol advocating for our city is, is wrong. And so I just want you to know that I have spent a lot of time advocating for our city and making sure that these kind of things actually maybe aren't always favorable, but they could be a lot worse. And so I just want you to know that we not just, we don't just spend time here on the dais reading our packets. We spend a lot of time outside advocating, working with legislative policies, making sure that our city is the best that it can be. And so I just want you to know that a lot of us spend a lot of time on legislative activities, so.
That's true. And I appreciate your service and the mayor's at that level, too, and everybody else's service, too. Any other comments? Just about the comments, I guess I would say. Because I, too, I guess I wanted to make just a comment about the point that I'm not representing the people that I represent. I've got a whole bunch of people that I represent that don't come to meetings. And I go to places where they are, and I talk to them. They have my cell phone number. You all have my cell phone number. You can text me. You can call me anytime. I'll have coffee with you. I'll go anywhere. So I've got neighbors. I mean, I do take into consideration all the things that people tell me or their feedback that they have. We're not always going to agree. It just works out that way. And I apologize about that. But I was elected to this position because I listen to people, but also because I feel they think I do have their best interests at heart. So that's my point of service. I don't appreciate getting criticized. I don't mind getting criticized based on my policy decisions, et cetera. But I will always defend myself in representing the people that elected me. Any other comments? Mayor?
Sure. Couple things. And I would echo Chair Chaburka, what you just said. Right now, we have eight members of the public in here. We represent 90,000 residents in the community. So we do have to listen to a much broader perspective of what's going on. And so sometimes the people you hear from the most are mad about things, the people you hear from the least are happy about things. And that's just kind of the nature of the job sometimes. I do want to give two points of clarification on what was said, though. I want to defend our Economic Development Group. They spent years. And a number of the people on this dais went to Denver and looked at what was happening in Denver with their Union Station plan and a number of other things. We have spent years holding open houses and town halls and public forums for people to come in and give us their advice and their consideration on what they think should happen down there. So to say this is something that we're just kind of taking on the hip and taking direction from just a handful of people is absolutely incorrect. There have been years of dialogue about Union Station. We do see it as a crown jewel for what's happening in our downtown, and that's something that's really important. And there's been a lot of noise made about the Wildlife Rescue Center. Nothing's been said about the 12 years. We gave them free access to a building. We took care of that building. We managed that whole area and everything else. This is not something they were surprised about. They've known about this for a long time. It sometimes comes back to no good deed goes unpunished. And it's, that's unfortunate because we gave them more than almost any other nonprofit in the city has had. And for people to throw stones and say we were un, you know, uncaring and, and inconsiderate about how that was approached is completely incorrect. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Chair, I'd just like to mention one more time. It is Constitution Month. Get your pocket version and read it. It's a, it's a really good read, especially those of us who have sworn an oath. You know, it, it's important that we kind of know what this says. Not that this governs local politics all that much. It does some. But it is a, it is a document that restrains the federal government from getting out of hand. And it's, it's nice to, to know that as, as citizens of this great country. If we don't, we're, we're apt to lose the freedoms that we have if we don't, if we don't stick up for the freedoms that, that are enshrined in, in this document. I also want to echo what the mayor and others have said, the Wildlife Rehabilitation Center, I, I have kind of kept biting my lip about that because I, I know they were making hay off of making us the bad guy, so they could get their, get money to, to make their move and to do the things that they should have been planning for, for a long time. But why they didn't, it's kind of between them and, and their plans. But the city has been a good host to them for 13 years. And it, it's just unfair to, to cast stones our way. It's, you know, it's just unfair.
Thank you. And the other thing I wanted to mention is talk to Christie McBride about the 100-year celebration, because I know she's got a lot of plans underway. Teresa, I was telling you to talk to Christie about the celebration. Okay, great. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, my councilmember Hare, second, my councilmember Blair, on favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.